Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the August 13, 2019 Board of Selectmen's Meeting. Could I have a roll call, please?
Selectmen Slavin, Manise, Bruce, Chairman Trappiano, and Town Council Sullivan are present.
Okay.
Not administrator.
Town Council's not here yet, but he's supposed to be. Can I have a pledge of allegiance? Tootsie, can you lead us in the pledge of allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, announcements we'll do quickly. And we're gonna go on to the...
So the old guy goes first?
Go ahead, you may go first.
Thank you. Okay. Pete is not here tonight, so I'll remind everybody, Meet Me at the Tremont is at the end of the month in August. It's a nice event that we do, I think this is the second or third year now. Hopefully, people will come out for that. Wareham Historical Society on this coming Monday has their ice cream social starting at 5:00 PM. Also be entertainment as well. One other piece, Pete is not here, but during our last meeting, there was an announcement that the Wareham Historical Society was doing a display at Meet Me at the Tremont. That was a misstatement, I just want to correct that. The noise out back? The other thing I'd like to talk about very quickly, I'm sure everybody else is gonna say something. The...
I can't hear you.
Bob, is it on or not?
There you go.
Okay, sorry. The issue with Wendy's, it was in the newspaper, magazines, TV and everything yesterday, was really a slap in the face to the town of Wareham and its residents. Myself, Sandy, and actually Judy White, I had a former selectman, were over at the D'Angelo's, right across the street from Wendy's virtually, and we were having a lunch there. And never had an issue ever, most of the places anywhere, but, you know, everything was fine, you know, the person who owns the actual franchise sits there and works there. The issue with Wendy's, as far as I'm concerned, is a management problem. I worked when I was 18 years old, I went into a delicatessen down the Cape in Hyannis, and in the summertime, they're extremely busy. They stuck me in the kitchen, I ran the kitchen, I had no idea what to do or anything. I was trained, they was constantly asking me to show me how to do stuff, and if I didn't do something right, I got told right away, it gets straightened out. The DM, I guess, was in the newspaper, actually on the TV about an hour ago, saying that he had been suspended for his comments, et cetera. I'm hoping Wendy's will step up and somehow compensate the town of Wareham for what I consider a horrible insult to everybody in this town. So I don't know how anyone else feels, but that's my opinion. Thank you.
Jim? Any announcements?
I would say that the number of vacancies on board... The mic.
Complete.
Number of vacancies on... Can you hear me now?
Yeah.
We gotta get close. Number of vacancies on board and committees in the town, and I want you to take a look at it if you're interested, and please consider volunteering to be on a board. Affordable Housing Trust, Beach and Tourism, Board of Assessors, we're still waiting to fill that, we have a couple applicants, we need to follow through on that. Chatter Review, we're almost there, as you'll see tonight. Conservation Commission, Historic District Committee, Historical Commission, Library Board of Trustees, Minute Forest Committee, Recycling Committee, Road Commission is an opening. It's kind of a surprise to me, but there is an opening there. Wareham Cultural Council and Zoning Board of Appeals is an associate opening. So think about stepping up and volunteering. Thank you.
Mary?
Yes, I will sound redundant to Alan. The Third Annual Meet Me at the Tremont Event will be held this... will be held Saturday, August 24th, at the Tremont Nail Factory Freight Building. Come join us for dinner by Lindsay's Restaurant, drinks and dancing to the tunes of daddy-o. Tickets are $40 and available at the Gallery Consignment Shop on Main Street, across from the post office, and also on the Cape Cod Canal Region Chamber of Commerce's website. There's one correction from the previous announcement, which did go out to the papers, unfortunately. The display of the historical artifacts in honor of the Tremont Nail Factory's 200th anniversary this year will be personally curated and arranged by noted local history buff Ms. Angela Dunham. So just wanted to make sure you all knew that.
Okay. All right, so I want everybody to understand about the triple E threat this year, it's very high and should be taken extremely serious, okay? Make sure that if you go out at dusk or dawn, that you're covered in the appropriate bug spray, and I believe the one that's approved is something that has DEED in it, in order to protect yourself. We do have cases now that are coming to the foreground that we haven't had since 2013. But it's a very, very high risk, and please take it seriously. It's something that you can take seriously and deal with and never have to worry about it. But if you don't and something happens, it's not a good thing. Secondly, I want to just touch on what Alan said about Wendy's. You know, I hate to hear it when people degrade this town and talk about this town badly. It happens way too often. Unnecessarily, not only unnecessarily, but we don't deserve it. Because these are good people in this town. These people work hard, we have some great, great blue collar workers here, we have some white collar workers here, we have a lot of good people here. Now, look, it isn't the fact that there's nobody who can take those jobs, we all know what's going on right now, the economy's flying pretty high. There's nobody to fill the jobs. Nobody can get workers because there's nobody, he isn't working. So I'm hoping that this is just a frustrated manager who is frustrated by the fact that he couldn't, he hasn't been able to get help, and he will see the light of day. I understand that Wendy's has already apologized in a form, and I hope that we don't hear any more of this kind of thing, because, you know, this is too good a community, there's too many good people in this community, there's too much going on in this community, more than most communities. Because, of course, we have our big summertime, and then, of course, we have our winter thing and everything else going on, so we're a great community. And let's not be talking bad about this community. And I don't care if you're a business in town, or you're yourselves, go around and talk nice about us, because you know what? I've always seen Wareham come to everybody's rescue when they needed help. I've seen it, it happened to me, I've seen it, they do it. So let's take them for what they are. I mean, look, there's always problems here and there, but by and large, we're good people, and let's try to keep it that way, and let's not have people talking badly about us. All right. Now, we're gonna skip over to the presentation of the Boston Cane to Mary Rose. So, Mary, I know you can't, you know, whatever, but we'll kind of come to you, how about that? First, we're gonna read it, and then we'll come to you, all right? Can you read the plaque, please?
I will try.
The presentation?
Board of Selectmen, Wareham, Massachusetts, awards this certificate to Mary Rose. In recognition and the honor bestowed on you, as the town's oldest citizen, in keeping with the tradition of the Boston Post Cane, we, the Board of Selectmen, extend our wishes for health, happiness, and good fortune. Congratulations on this 13th day of August, 2019.
Congratulations. Joan? All right, there you go. (inaudible) Sam, the clam. The clam. You can stay with me.
I'm happy.
Oh, you're taking kisses after.
Mary? So, you know, one of the things that's really kind of neat, one of the things that really kind of neat is the cane, you know, it's been passed down over years, you know, and then they got to the point, at one point, and they stopped doing that, and they kind of put it in storage at the library, and they were afraid that they wouldn't, they'd have problems getting it back, so they started giving out this copy thing that they were giving out. And I'm so glad that we're back to giving the real cane out, because what's the sense of having it if we can't give it out? You know what I mean? You deserve to have the real McCoy. So...
Thank you very much.
Speech, speech.
Speech, does she have something? Does she want to say something? We can...
Mary, you want to say something?
You want to give her a microphone? We give her a microphone. Just pull that, pull one of those mics right over to her, let her say she has something she wants to say, absolutely.
(inaudible).
Absolutely. Pull it right down to her mouth so that she can be heard.
Well, I thank everybody that's here, and (laugh) it's quite a good thing for me, and it's very, very, very wonderful to me and to my family. I thank everybody, everybody.
That's awesome. Absolutely, yeah. Yeah. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Speech, speech.
Speech, does she have something? Does she want to say something? We can...
Mary, you want to say something?
You want to give her a microphone? We give her a microphone. Just pull that, pull one of those mics right over to her, let her say she has something she wants to say, absolutely.
(inaudible).
Absolutely. Pull it right down to her mouth so that she can be heard.
Well, I thank everybody that's here, and (laugh) it's quite a good thing for me, and it's very, very, very wonderful to me and to my family. I thank everybody, everybody.
That's awesome. Absolutely, yeah. Yeah. Thank you so much.
Great job.
Bye-bye now.
Bye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ah-ha. (laughing)
You know what, Dave?
That's awesome. I'm gonna give a couple of minutes for everybody to clear the room and kind of calm down a little bit, so we can keep going, so hang in there a couple of seconds, please. Come on, you can talk, come on. I can't hear you, so...
Stay out of trouble for now, brother.
Awesome. Yeah. Thank you. Take care. Bye-bye. Bye-bye now. Get easy.
Thank you.
All right, so next, we're gonna move on to is citizens' comments. Is anybody here to speak to us this evening? Oh, yes. Come on down, I haven't seen you in a couple of weeks. Come on down.
I've been saving them.
I'll bet you have. You got a piece of paper? Oh, yeah, we're in trouble now.
(inaudible) and reading glasses.
Oh, yeah, okay, that's all right. Come on down.
Sandy Slavin. Okay. I got this green thing in my inbox, it talks about the process for calling a town meeting, and it's not clear on here when the articles are due to the selectmen. It does say September 5th, last day for articles or petitions to be inserted in the warrant. Does that mean absolutely everything I submit by September 5th will be inserted in the warrant?
No.
Because it's not clear to me when...
It's the last day for us to vote to insert stuff on the warrant.
On the Thursday.
Well, what happens is, is it's the last day before, the Thursday is the day that they, we post the warrant, so it's for that Tuesday coming up. But after that day, there's no way to post it and have a meeting.
Okay, but Tuesday, September...
So that's why it's on a Thursday.
September 10th is that you will close the warrant. I was just wondering when an article needs to be submitted so it can be considered for a warrant posting.
I don't have it in front of me, but it usually tells you when the submission is...
Am I confused? No, it doesn't. That's why I'm here saying, there's no date to say when the...
It's the 5th, I think, right? Yeah, it's the 5th.
The last day for articles or petitions to be inserted in the warrant.
That's the last day for anybody to bring a petition?
But there isn't any date for when I submit CPA articles? There's no date for when the articles are due? Am I... It's... Am I missing this?
(inaudible).
(laughing) Yeah, yesterday.
Does anybody look at...
No, it's the 5th. It's the 5th is the last day. That means you or anybody else has to have everything in our office to go on to the next meeting for that Tuesday to be inserted, if they're gonna be inserted on the warrant. That's the last drop dead date.
Okay, so there's no time for petitioners to come in and ask you to consider posting their article on the warrant?
Well, they have to get them in at the same time as everybody else.
So, that's it, I...
Yes, one of the things, and Mr. Chairman, if I may...
Go ahead.
You can, you can submit your articles today, and I'm not joking, if you...
That's a fact.
If you want them taken ahead of time, or if there's something, if you have them prepared...
Okay.
If you need to wait till the last minute, that's the absolute...
But I can. Me and absolutely everybody else with a warrant can wait until, has to have it in by September 5th.
It's the very last day. It does not mean yours will make it on to the warrant, though.
Oh, I know that.
(laughing)
I've learned from experience, not everything that's...
Well, at least you know.
I just that...
See, so you already know the answer to your question.
Well, no, normally, there's a date for when the articles need to be submitted to the selectmen, and then the selectmen to put it on the warrant, and there was no different dates, and I was confused on it.
Chairman, we can always, I can always take a look, if there's something else that we have in there, I'll be glad to send it to you.
Yeah, okay, we can take a look at it, but I think it's right. The 5th is right.
And one more thing, sorry, it's, could be last day to submit articles to FinCom to be included in the warrant on September 16th. I think it's got the wrong verb on it. Last day to submit articles to FinCom to be included in the warrant. By that time, everything's already included in the warrant. Am I just...
Finance Committee Handbook.
Okay, okay. Now...
Yeah, that's the official warrant, which is a piece of paper.
Is there any, any... I'm seeing we have another secondhand dealer coming before us tonight. Is there any way to confirm who hasn't, who's done it in the past?
We only have one that hasn't been approved.
Because I thought May 1st was the deadline for all secondhands, and I was just wondering if there's anything else out there that has done it in the past, and this is the last one.
Only one that hasn't been approved so far.
Okay.
And that's coming tonight.
And that's coming tonight, so that does it. And Briarwood, why is their water so dirty?
You're asking me?
I'm asking in general across the board, anybody on...
I think you should ask the Water Department about that. We don't have anything to do with their water.
Why is the Board of Health saying the water is so bad they can't swim in it?
Are you talking about the water at the beach?
Yeah, why the beaches are closed at Briarwood.
I think that's an inaccurate statement.
Yeah, that is.
The Board of Health samples the waters and sends it to the Barnstable Lab, and the Barnstable Lab tells you what the sample's result is.
Correct.
So the Board of Health is not saying the way the water quality is, they only issue what they get from the Barnstable Labs. As to what's going on with those waters, could you, who knows what's going on with that?
Could it very well be that there's 17 homes that haven't connected to sewer in Briarwood and Rosewood, and we we antique that all flow down into those waters? There could very well be a variety of reasons, just that poor Briarwood hasn't had...
It could be the aliens came out of the sky and poured sewer.
That could very well have been, or the ducks were there, or the geese were there.
It could be geese that are there, it could be anything like that.
Could be dogs on the beach?
Could be.
Okay, that was it, I just...
All right.
Clar, I needed clarifying the, when my articles are due for warrant.
You know, you could ask your husband, you know, you sleep right next to him, I'm assuming.
And the answer is, "I don't know," and "yes, dear."
(laughing) I'm assuming you could ask him.
Oh, I've asked.
And get those answers.
And the answer is, "Yes, dear."
All right.
Mr. Chairman, one of the things is that I'm going to ask Mrs. Slavin, I know this is a, this is a fun time for her to come up, but if there's issues outstanding, like what you just, what you read for the process of calling the warrant, give us a heads up. I know it's fun coming up here and such, but this doesn't give you the time, and frankly, we're not supposed to be interacting. It's supposed to be citizens' comments.
Correct.
So I'd appreciate it.
I'll be a citizen in a minute.
Thank you.
All right. Yes, Alan? Oh, no, not dueling Slavens.
No. My recommendation was that you contact the town administrator with questions, not here, but that never works that way.
Is that what you told her?
Yes. Also, we have a warrant article that was passed in the spring, waiting for the Attorney General to sign off, which changes things a little bit. What we do normally, just, and I don't like answering questions in a short-term notice like this, is that we go ahead and as warrant articles come in, we bring them up, and we discuss them as early as we can. All this is, is the end deadline, but that article, if it passes, changes things a little bit also for us.
It won't change anything, no.
No.
Because we've already called the town meeting.
We've already called the town meeting, so it's there.
This one is what it is.
But it'll affect the spring town meeting.
It'll affect the spring.
So it's in flux.
All right, so next up is board comments. Go ahead, Alan.
The month of August is a very quiet month, because everybody's on vacation away, so everything at the state, the Plymouth County, and the Serpette Regional Level is kind of, there's no meetings, so there's very little report there. We did get one report back, the FCC has put through the ruling, it's not confirmed 100%, but it looks as if any contribution of any kind, whether it's the 5% money or any other services provided through the cable companies to our local cable station, is considered as part of the fee, which means there is a good possibility, unless someone finds a way to change this, that the actual 5% money that we have now is the max that we can get, and there's a good chance they're gonna cut that money back, and therefore, WCTV is going to have less assets available and provide less services. So it's very discouraging to see this come through and actually get all the way through, when most cities and towns throughout the country voted, not in favor of this change, but very strong letters opposing it, and it still has gone through.
This is awful, what has occurred, because all these meetings that you see, not just this, but town meeting, and, you know, zoning, and all those meetings that you get to see, could impact all of that. Because they, the FCC sees it clear to give more money to cable companies, basically, in my opinion.
They're actually letting the cable companies pay less fees.
It's just, it's absurd.
That's all it is.
But, okay, Jim?
No, I'll talk to you first, just to get things...
Okay.
That'd be the better way to go.
All right. Nothing for Mary. All right, so the only thing I want to discuss tonight is the carry-in, carry-out policy here in town. I have a lot of people looking for barrels, and every year, we run into this, where they're saying, "How come we don't have barrels on the beach, and how come we don't have barrels here? And why don't we have a barrel here, and why don't we do this?" And we go through the same process every year, we're what you call a carry-in, carry-out town, it's how we handle it. Now, just so you know, if there were barrels out there, it would only make the trash worse. We already know this, because we used to put barrels out there. And the people didn't throw the stuff in the barrel, they threw it next to the barrel. And then it blew all the way down the beach and everywhere else, and if they didn't, if it was full of the barrel, they'd just throw bags of house trash around it. And they would fill these things up, and it was very difficult to keep track of. Believe it or not, the amount of trash that's around is very much reduced since we've gone to carry-in, carry-out, because 90% of us, or 99% of us, are doing the right thing, taking our trash, bring it in, take it, and take it out with us. And then there's no issue. And it seems to work very well. I was, had somebody complain, I wanted to go look, and there's a little bit, a few things have been thrown out on this, down there by the parking area and stuff, and I had looked every day to see what it was, and it's not very much, a little, few pieces here and there, and, but a lot of it was nips. Well, I'm gonna tell you something, you could put a barrel the size of Wareham, and those nips are not going in it. Does anybody agree with that? I'm sure you do. Because all they're gonna do when they drink those nips is they're gonna throw them and fire them no matter where they are, and the barrels don't mean anything. Now, I was out at Martha's Vineyard two weeks ago, and they're a carry-in, carry-out, and the beaches are fine, beautiful. Is there a paper here and there? Of course there is. But by and large, it's pretty clean. They used to have the same problem we had, I spoke to a guy about it, that they pad the barrels at the beginning of the entryways, and people would throw the stuff mostly around it and hardly ever in the barrel. And it made it very difficult, because, of course, then it blows all the way down and causes all kinds of problems. So it's not, it's not our parents' time anymore. It isn't like it used to be, where, you know, people just kind of did everything like they're supposed to do. There are people who just don't do the right thing. So let's try and make the policy work, and let's try and not throw the trash around. And those of you drinking nips, please put them in the damn barrel, somewhere, and go into a store, go someplace, put them in your pocket, take them away, take them home, I don't care. But please try not to throw them in the street. I can't believe the amount of nips that are out there, and Alan had a great idea once, is that he wanted to see them banned, we can't do that, but I understand that they're gonna start having a deposit on those. There's a talk at the State House for having a deposit, and as a matter of fact, I think there's some legislation been drafted, which would be a great thing.
There's actually two separate bills, one is deposit, and the other one is a banning of miniatures in general.
Well, I'd like to see them have a deposit, because that will change the whole picture. Everybody will be out there picking those suckers up. I might, myself.
(inaudible).
You have a big collection, yeah, you pick up trash everywhere, so you'll probably find them everywhere. All right, let's move on.
Can I just, on the barrel issue?
Yeah.
I think what you have is you have a lot of small, you have a lot of small volunteer groups that are going around picking up the stuff. Some of these people might be the ones saying, "Hey, could we get a barrel?", because they're doing it on a regular basis. And it's not that they mind doing it, but barrels in certain places or on certain days might, might help out on the impact. And I, as you went down by Heinz Field a couple of times and keeping an eye on it. So, I mean, it's food for thought, and maybe if the citizens would want to come in and discuss it with us, or send us letters, or suggestions of what they'd like to do. I know we have some, some ones that are solar compactions here and there, I mean, and I know it would be taxing, it's taxing on Wareham municipal maintenance as it is, because they need to go pick up the fields and pick up the beaches if no one else is doing it. And I know people use, they use the barrels for their personal trash at times, and, you know, they're just gonna throw it somewhere else. And if we can get 50% of the trash captured on a weekend day, that would be great. I mean, I know you've cut that out of the services that we offer, I don't even know if we have the compactor anymore, I don't know if we hire student employees in the summer to, to work on an hourly basis and pay them to assist.
We do, I've got them, a summer youth job program that does a lot of work for the town.
Anyhow, barrels don't work, Jim. Jim, barrels don't work.
I worked on a 200-acre university, I threw a lot of barrels, so I know how they work and don't work.
Well, barrels don't work.
I'm all set, thank you.
We've, we've had this policy for, I don't know, over three years now, it's a three or four?
It's been about...
At least three.
You're going on five years.
Five years, so I'm even wrong. And by and large, we've had way less trash than we used to have, by a long shot. So if the policy's working, it's, there's little, little things that, you know, come So, if the policy's working, uh, it's, there's little, little things that, you know, come about as a result of it, but at any rate, that's the policy, and that's what they've decided, and, uh, that's where it's going to be as far as, as far as administration's concerned.
I've had hundreds of hours of meetings on this. When I first came down, I remember the skunk issue in onset.
Right.
All over the place, um, the hours spent on this, the fistfight in the street over people moving the barrels because they wanted it closer to their homes, and it was a complete nightmare. I'm not saying this is the best, but I can tell you, it's the best alternative to those barrels. That was terrible.
But to have nothing.
What's that?
Best alternative is to have nothing.
Is to have a carry-in, carry-out trash policy, which works very well in a lot of communities, it works very well in Little Harbor, works very well at Swifts, you know, so it's just interesting that it's onset. And I remember Dick Wheeler was speaking to me about it a lot, and one day he came back to me and said, "You want to know what? I'm sorry, you're right, the most of trash I'm seeing is down by Shell Point, which is where our residents go." And that was shocking for me. So, uh, there's, those that are walking to their homes can certainly take it. I'm a, I'm a father that had young children that went to the beach, that took dirty diapers home in my car and such, we prepared for it. Uh, they've done a nice job putting new signs out at the stairs that were the hot-button issues. Uh, Cat Jones did a nice job of putting out the bags for, for folks, uh, they took advantage of that, they then made it a little, made it worse.
What bags?
I mean, the bags were, honestly, unfortunately, made a little worse for a while, because people took those bags and then put it right back at the sign, and it was almost, frankly, it was spitting in the community's face.
You mean the doggy bags?
Not just the doggy bags, but they put up signs with the fish on them, and had little, you'd take out, and it was almost like a stop-and-shop bag in there. So the people would take them kindly, wrap them up, and put it right back there, just throw it on the ground.
I guess it's a, um, matter of perception, and, and how you look at it. So if, if, if the complaints continue, then it's probably something we should look into, and, um, and just not ignore the fact. I'm not saying it's totally wrong, or that it's right, it's just, you know, there's a number of people who are concerned about it. I've taken a look around, I, I saw a plastic bag filled with cans and stuff up on top of the parking onset this morning. Um, it was nice, it was in a plastic bag, someone was nice enough to pick it up. But someone needs to pick those bags up that are put out. There's bags hanging on benches along the railroad tracks. Someone needs to pick those bags up that are hanging on the benches there. So, if you don't, they deteriorate, and it just gets all strewn about. So, I mean, things do need to be addressed.
All right.
Thanks.
Well, I think, uh, we might have a stronger, uh, fine policy for the people that aren't carrying and carrying out. I can tell you that in, uh, on Martha's Vineyard, which I spent a lot of time on, uh, the beaches are beautiful, there's never anything on the beach. You know, you see a paper here and there on a rare occasion, there's never anything on the beach. And we are just as, just able to do what anybody else can do in this community. Uh, for some reason or another, some people just don't want to do it. And those particular individuals who don't want to do it, then, uh, it's time that we start fining them.
Yep, three hundred bucks.
All right, next up is appointments, reappointments, and interviews. Interviews for applicants of the Charter Review Commission. Can we start with, uh, who are we going to start with?
Mr. Chairman, do you, uh, I'm going to ask for something, I apologize.
Yeah.
We've got Mr. Ripley in the audience tonight, and I know we've got a lot of residents, but he is a brand-new father to a first child.
Yeah.
And while I'm sure maybe it's fun to be away, I'd love to get him home to the, to the family tonight.
Mr. Ripley?
Yeah. George Ripley, from Wareham Library Director.
All right, we can do that. I didn't realize he was here.
Yeah.
Come on down, Mr. Ripley.
Thank you.
He's just protecting his people, that's all, I get that.
And a hearty congratulations.
Thank you. I can feel my wife giving Mr. Sullivan a thank you from all the way across the harbor, so.
Thanks, George.
Evening, your honors.
All right.
So, there's a number of donation requests in front of you tonight, so I just wanted to come, just in case you had any questions, just because of the amount of them, or the material that they might cover. And also, if you had any questions about the library, it's been a number of, uh, months since I've been before you, so just in case there's anything that you might be interested in asking about. We've done a lot in the last year in terms of trying to help the library speed up and move ahead, and we've all been very impressed with how far we've been able to come in such a short time. As you all are aware, we were recently, uh, this past November, recertified. Um, as of right now, we are actually on track to be fully certified this year with no, uh, need for any waivers or any accommodations whatsoever. Um, so if that continues to be the case, which, from the paperwork I'm doing, it looks to be, we might actually be more certified than Fall River is. So, that's very exciting for us at the library.
Well, these are for the acceptances?
Yeah.
Yes, sir.
So you have a bunch of donation acceptances here for the library?
Mm-hmm.
Um, Friends of the, uh, Wareham Free Library and the amount of $500 in a memory of Richard Wheeler.
Yep.
For the purchase of books related to environmental sciences, uh, sustainability and nature for the main library and spinning memorial branch, correct?
Yes, sir.
All right, so, could I have a motion for that, please?
So moved.
All right, motion for Mary, seconded by Alan. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, it's unanimous. The next one is the Friends of Free Library and the amount of $1,200 for the purchase of museum passes.
Motion so made.
Motion made by Alan, seconded by Mary, all, all in favor, say aye. Opposed, abstaining, it's unanimous. The next one is the Wareham Library Foundation and the amount of $5,000 for the purchase of books and materials. So moved by Mary, seconded by Alan.
Just one quick comment.
Yeah.
Um, obviously, we really appreciate the Friends of the Wareham Free Library, what they do, all the different sales, et cetera. But I want to also bring up that the Library Foundation has been a major contributor, actually, I don't know, Derek, it still does, but I believe they raise enough money also to pay part of your salary.
Yes, sir.
And, uh, they've really gone out of their way, and they don't really get the recognition they need for what they do for the library. I just want to make sure everybody understands that this is not just some group that collects a bit, a few dollars here and there. Uh, they give us forty thousand a year, somewhere in that range, Derek?
I think that was last year's, and, uh...
And I think they increase it every year.
...just got it set up a little differently, right, George?
A little bit, yeah, so now it's, um, it, on average, it's somewhere between thirty to thirty-five, give or take.
They do a nice job.
Yeah, they need to be recognized, that's a substantial amount of money, an independent group which has no foundation really per se. It's a, it's a foundation and name, but it's a group of people that just, that are concerned about our library. We need to thank them, thank you.
All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, it's unanimous. Um, let's see, Friends of the Wareham Free Library, Inc., and the amount of $5,000 for the purchase of books and materials, another one.
So moved.
So, okay, motion made by Mary, seconded by Alan. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Opposed, abstaining, it's unanimous. Friends of the Wareham Free Library and the amount of $400 in memory of George Shaw to purchase historical books.
So moved.
Motion made by Mary, seconded by Alan. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Opposed, abstaining, it's unanimous. There you go.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Have a nice evening.
It's nice to see you again.
Thank you.
Have a nice family night.
Thank you, yes.
All right, let's do the, um, interviews with the Charter Review Committee folks, pick one out, and we'll start.
First one up, we have Julianne Curry.
Julianne, is she here? Julianne? No? All right, how about Peter? Come on down. All right, so, how we're going to handle this is, I'll give you a couple of minutes to, to tell us about yourself, and, uh, why you want to be here, and that kind of thing, and then, um, I'll have the board ask questions, okay? Um, of you and so on, and, uh, we're going to vote on these in probably early September, okay? Because we've got a couple of rounds, so...
All right, I'm Pete Dunlop. Uh, I was past chairman of the COA, I'm a member of the Sewer Commissioners, and, uh, the only reason I really want to get into this is to just discuss this town charter with some other people, and I'm not necessarily into changing anything, but I'm certainly open to suggestions.
Okay. Is, uh, anybody want to ask questions? Alan?
Do you have any concerns about our town government as it is, as far as the actual government itself? We're a town meeting government, are you looking for any changes that way?
Any concerns about it?
Yeah. Are you happy with, as a town meeting government, are you looking to change anything around, or do you have any desire for anything?
I'm, I'm not advocating any changes, but I'm certainly willing to play devil's advocate and listen.
Thank you.
Jim?
Um, I think you, you were self-explanatory in why you wanted to, you were self-explanatory in why you wanted to be on the committee, in the sense of participating and having discussion, open discussion, so I don't have any further questions for you.
Mary?
I have no questions.
I don't either, I, I know Jim pretty well, and I know, uh, what type of guy you are and everything, so I'm okay, you know?
Peter.
So, uh, uh, you know, I know you're a thinker, and I like that.
That's it?
Thank you.
That's all?
Thank you, Peter.
You're an easy one.[1251.83][1251.83](laughing) Some of the people we know, it's kind of easy, you know?
Not kind of.
All right.
Sandra Slavin.
Next one would be Sandra Slavin. Boy, I think I know her too, I've seen her somewhere. Ms. Slavin, would you like to come down and tell us why you want to be on the committee, and a little bit about yourself?
(inaudible).
Huh? Yeah. Is there a committee you don't sit on?
Yes.
All right.
Um, Sandy Slavin, um, Wareham is my home. It's been my family's home for a long time. I graduated from high school here, I'm comfortable in Wareham, I do belong to a lot of committees and commissions and boards. I believe I have an insight into the town, uh, that, um, is unique, um, because of my involvement in so many organizations and committees. I would like to see a full review of it one more time, I want the charter to, to equal the, the bylaws and the bylaws to equal the charter, and that takes a lot of review and time, and I'm willing to give the time in order to do that.
Okay. Questions? Uh, Mr. Slavin, do you have any questions of Mrs. Slavin?
Mr. Slavin, for the safety of my own life, is going to abstain on this, because it is a conflict of interest.
Yeah, well, you'd have to be careful anyway, because you'd be sleeping in a doghouse.
My garage is always ready.[1343.01][1343.01](laughing)
Jim, do you have anything?
Hey, you said, um, you, you want to have the charters and the bylaws reflect each other, or, um, be in concert with one another. So you're working on the charter, so does the addressing, how the bylaws reflect back onto the charter, come at a later date? Because you're not working on bylaws at this point in time, you're working on the charter.
I believe in 2010, when they made the charter changes, they also proposed bylaw changes, so they would be in sync, so they wouldn't be conflicted. So there could very well be bylaw changes that would be submitted to town meeting along with charter changes in order for them to be matching.
By the committee?
By, yes, by the, by the Charter Review Committee. You can't have the Charter Review say A, and the bylaws say B, they've got to be in sync.
No, no, I, I agree with that, and I, I still always thought it was done after everything was addressed on the charter changes. Um, but no, I'm, I'm good, I heard what you said.
Mary?
I have no questions.
I don't have any questions either.[1419.01][1419.01](laughing) Another easy.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sandy.
Is that all we had, was four?
Marianne's not here, and...
I know somebody who couldn't come, so they got moved to the 27th.
That's not correct, no.
And Marianne's not here.
Yep.
So Marianne Silver, you're not, she's not here, okay, so we're not going to do her application either. All right, that's it as far as charter review for right now. We're missing, two people didn't show up, just so you know, gentlemen, ladies and gentlemen, and, um, one of them couldn't come tonight, and I moved her to the 27th.
You have a withdrawal, right?
Then we had one withdrawal, Larry, yes, Larry McDonald. He's, uh, actually moving to Dartmouth, so... All right, next up is, uh, Wareham Cultural Council appointments.
Yes, uh, Jamie Wickston.
Come on down. You're the next contestant. On the appointment is right.[1478.41][1478.41](laughing) Tell us a little bit about yourself.
Hello, I'm Jamie Wickston. Um, I've been a promoter of the arts for most of my career, both theatrically and musically. I'm the drama director at the Wareham Middle School, um, and I myself received a cultural council grant this year to help promote the arts with the Drama Club, and I love what they do and would like to contribute and give back to my community and be a part of the council.
Perfect.
All right, great.
Anybody else? Questions?
Well, thank you for stepping up.
Motion, please?
All right, I move that we, um, appoint Jamie Wickston to the, um, Cultural Council for a term to expire no later than June 30th, 2021.
Okay, second, second, okay, motion made by Mary, seconded by Jim. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, unanimous, 400. Thank you.
Thank you.
Have fun. All right, next up is the, uh, CMW Regional Refuge Disposal District Appointment. Um, we are, Marietta is coming off, and, uh, Joseph Bennett is going to be going on, okay?
Joe's here.
Joe, are you here? Oh, come down, Joe, come down and introduce yourself, and tell us who you are.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Uh, my name is Joseph Benedict. I retired to Wareham in 2015, uh, after spending thirty-five wonderful years in the solid waste industry, both in the, uh, public and private sector.
I saw that on your, your thing, yeah.
And, uh, I am, I was born in Fall River, raised in Somerset, and, uh, took a temporary job in Illinois, one-year temporary job in Illinois in 1980, and moved back in 2015.
All right.
Welcome back.
Welcome back.
Thanks for stepping up.
All right, any questions of anybody?
Obviously, our disposal system that we have right now has been in question, been lots of issues. Do you have any, as far as going forward, any ideas of where you stand with everything that's going on?
I...
Because you're not walking into a peaceful situation.
I've been to several of the meetings. I've been collecting information. I do, I guess I'm still trying to learn how to ask the question. There's a lot of questions I have. And until I get the answers to those questions, it needs to be fixed, that I can tell you. I don't know what would be the appropriate fix for the community. It isn't anything that any other community doesn't face. There may be some tweaks that need to be done, but there is, there will be some changes or there should be some changes.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Jim?
I just want to say, I met Joe, I think it was in February. I was at the meeting just as a resident and had some talks with him. And he's been at all the meetings that I've been to, I believe. And he has valuable input, and with his background, I think he'll be an asset to the committee.
Okay, Mary?
Excellent, no.
Motion, please?
I move that we appoint Joseph R. Benedict to the CMW Regional Refuge Disposal District.
Motion made by Mary, seconded by Jim. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, unanimous, 400. Thank you, sir. Thank you for your volunteer.
Thank you.
All right, next up, license and permits. Request from the Buzzards Bay Coalition for the use of town roads to hold the annual Buzzards Bay Watershed Ride on Sunday, October 6, 2019.
Good evening, I'm Deborah Hood with the Buzzards Bay Coalition. I usually don't come down for the application. I know you guys usually just approve it year to year. This will be the 13th Annual Watershed Ride, but just wanted to come down in case there were any concerns. I saw that you have a new festival coming that weekend into Wareham and also just with the new Vera Life, if there's any accommodations.
Okay. Let's see where they, what are the streets?
What's the other festival?
I thought, is there a food truck festival for October 5th or 6th?
Food Truck Festival, yeah.
Yeah. On Main Street, but I think we always have gone on High Street, so, and come down sort of around behind.
You're going to go down High and around, which shouldn't really affect you at all.
Okay.
Although there is, if it's anything like the one they had in Plymouth that I went to over the summer, there was a lot of people.
Yeah.
Oh, it was crazy.
I don't have a map. I have a turn-by-turn for the whole entire race.
Oh, yeah.
That's fine. We know where it is. It's the same all the time.
It's the same all the time. We come in, Mary, we come in on, from Rochester on Main Street, get to Gibbs Avenue, and then along High Street.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, and then back behind, cut down on Cedar.
You go down Church Street, down that way, right?
And the only new thing I would think coming down Cedar is just getting the extra traffic at the Vera Life corner, but I imagine there'll be a detail as there always is.
Yeah, there always somebody around there.
I think, I think the police department said they'd just take care of it. I don't, I, they didn't require any additional officers.
No, they didn't require anything.
I think only one group did for people.
But other than that, it should be just business as usual.
All right, motion, please?
I move that we give permission to the Buzzards Bay Coalition, care of Deborah Hood, 114 Front Street, New Bedford, Mass., for the use of the town roads to hold the annual Buzzards Bay Watershed Ride on Sunday, October 6, 2019.
Motion made by Mary, seconded by Alan. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Opposed, abstaining, unanimous, 400. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Next up, an application from New England Authentic Eats LLC, DBA Papaginos, 2899 Cranberry Highway, Wareham Mass., for the common vicular license. Nobody's here, right? Oh, you are?
I am.
Oh, okay. They usually come in for common vics, but, okay.
No, they told me to come, so...
It's just a renewal, too.
I know.
It's a good thing. Hey, good management.
Thank you.
So, can we have a motion to renew this?
I move that we approve the application from Wareham, this is New England Authentic Eats LLC, DBA Papaginos, 2899 Cranberry Highway East, Wareham, for a common vic license.
Second, okay, made by Mary, a motion made by Mary, seconded by Alan. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Opposed, abstaining, it's unanimous, 400. Thank you.
Thank you.
Application from ACAP Inc., DBA Wines &amp; More of Wareham. Now, this one is not coming. We're not doing this one tonight because the guy couldn't be here, and this is a change of manager. And typically, we want to see the manager. We want to meet him. So, we're going to bring it back on the 27th, okay?
Okay.
Next is a second-hand dealers license for Gallery Consignment Shop. It's the last one that we have for renewal. And can I have a motion, please?
I move that we renew the application for Gallery Consignment Shop for their second-hand dealer license, 24247 Main Street, Wareham, Mass.
Motion made by Mary, seconded by Alan. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Opposed, abstaining, it's unanimous. Thank you.
After the fact, when we get this all done, we should make a master list up and probably give it to inspectional services. So, when they're out and around, if they happen to run anything that they notice, they can at least make a note of it.
Yeah, we can do that. We can send them down a...
People forget, they take stuff in used sometimes and resell it. They don't consider themselves a second-hand dealer.
Yeah, we have, I mean, you know, this thing is a crazy kind of thing anyway, because the fact that we have, you know, boat places and all these places that, I think we stopped the boat one, but the others are still, that have, you know, happen to have a couple of used things and they happen to have a couple of used parts, so they're selling. They need a license is almost absurd, but it is what it is.
That's all.
But we'll, we'll get a list down to them. All right, next up, application from Paul Rose Dudley L. Brown, VFW Post 2846, for three one-day liquor licenses for August 17th from noon to 7:00, August 24th from 11:00 to 7:00, and August 31st from 11:00 to 6:00. And these are at the Pavilion. Any, can I have a motion? Just say so, move.
Second.
Motion made by Mary, seconded by Alan. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, it's unanimous. Thank you so much. All right, next up, we did all the, we have a certificate here for Joan Fonce. Alan asked us to prepare. You got that certificate there?
Is that supposed to be a surprise?
Yeah, we got to authorize it, so... Is this the one? Yeah. All right, so, "We, the Board of Selectmen, would like to congratulate you on your 80th birthday celebration. We hope you continue to experience an abundance of happiness and health and a loving family on your 80th birthday. We would also like to thank you for your years of service on the Finance Committee and your dedication and commitment to the Oakdale Community." Everybody signed it as, I make a, can you make, just say, make a motion to approve?
I make a motion to approve what we already signed.
Second?
Second.
Second by Alan. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, it's unanimous. And I'm going to give this over to Alan, so he can take it and get it to the young lady, get it to the young lady at 80, Joan. Haven't seen Joan in ages. You know, when she used to hang around with Marcin and all those guys, you know? It was, they had their little group, you know? They used to run that athletic association too, do you remember?
Well, Joan was one of eight sisters.
Yeah. All right. Next up, discussion regarding, regarding becoming the sister towns with Wareham, England. Come on down, Ms. Moderator. I know she's been, and this is something we've talked about. She's brought it up a couple of times to us. And I think is the time to pull the, pull the trigger, so to speak.
Thank you for having me here. About a month and a half ago, we had John and Marie Wright that visited us from Wareham, England, not Wareham. And Howie and I had the pleasure of spending the day with them and showing them all of wonderful parts of our town and talking with them. And it just was a really great day. We brought them in to meet our town administrator, see our town hall. Alan happened to be there. And we happened to mention that it would be nice if we could connect them and become sister towns. Back in '76, when we had the bicentennial celebration, the mayor of England did come over with all her regalia, and it was talked about then. It just never happened. And then in 2014, actually, they sent over a proclamation. I don't know if you've seen it. It is in the town clerk's office. So, there's been a connection. So, John and Marie, when they went back home, reached out to the mayor of Wareham, and she in turn emailed me. And she thinks this is an absolutely wonderful idea. She's very excited about it. So, she brought it before her town council last Tuesday evening. Some of them were around back in '76 and remembered that it had been talked about, but no action had been taken. And they overwhelmingly voted and approved to go forward with it. They call it twinning.
Twinning, really?
Twinning.
Oh, no kidding?
Twinning. They are a twinning town to a town in Germany, so I know they've gone through the process. I did email her back and thanked her, but told her I would have to bring it before you. And then with your approval, I would get back to her and then we would start the process, whatever it is. John and Marie have invited Howie and I to come over for a visit, so we're looking forward, hopefully, to do that sometime within the next year, sooner rather than later. And have been invited to appear before the town council as well. So, I'm here tonight to bring it before you and ask for your blessing, and I hope it's something that you would approve doing.
Absolutely. I would like a motion from somebody to become the sister, sister town to Wareham, England. And I will put together a proclamation after the fact, after we vote it, and we'll get it to everybody to sign. Okay?
So moved.
So moved by Mary. Do I have a second? Seconded from Jim. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, it's unanimous. And we will get a, I'll have them put together a proclamation so you can get it to them.
Okay, sounds wonderful. When they were in here, Marie made the comment that our town hall is very large, and their town hall would fit in the lobby of our town hall. It's a very small town, but, you know, we're looking forward. There were a lot of characteristics as we took them around Wareham that they kept saying, "This looks very much like home, and we have this," so I think it's really a good match, and I'm excited about it. I am looking forward to going over and seeing our twin.
Well, you know, most of the towns that are around Boston, which was sort of the first, as you well know, are named after places in England. Cambridge and, you know, all those places are named for England.
Yes, yep.
It is what it is, so it's kind of neat that we have that kind of relationship anyway.
Yeah, and how often on the news, if you hear them talk about Wareham, they say Wirum. And that's how they pronounce it in England, so...
Well, they say Knif, too, don't they?
Yeah.
Now, this is something I'm going to ask Claire to look into, because I was reading one of the books on it, and it was saying that we are the only Wareham in the United States.
Yes. Yes, they're excited. They're very excited. I know the mayor is very excited about doing this, and so I think it's neat.
It's kind of exciting, so we're happy to do it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for bringing it up.
Yeah, thank you, Claire.
Okay, next up is any other town business not reasonably in the last 48 hours? Does anybody have anything but me? Okay, I have one. We have a bill that didn't get on the warrant and for Richard Bowen. So, I'm going to ask Mary to read this and, so we can vote this bill.
Okay.
He needs to get paid, you know, once in a while. He actually needs his money.
All right, I move that we authorize the payment of professional services through August 20th, 2019, for a total to Richard Bowen, the law offices of Richard Bowen totaling $15,650 in one set.
Motion made by Mary, seconded by Alan. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Opposed, abstaining. Now, the reason why is because, you know, if we didn't, if we didn't do it now and we had to do it on the 27th, then it takes a couple of weeks for the check to actually get cut and all that.
We'll be here next week, right?
So, he would be. We're going to have a special meeting next week, but only one thing on the agenda. There's only one thing on the agenda, nothing else. All right. Next up would be the Town Administrator's Report.
Mr. Chairman, I know we spoke about it by a few members already, but the Wendy's issue. I was contacted by Mr. Coley O'Brien, who's the chief people officer. A people officer basically is involved with the company culture and sets everything up, so this is clearly an issue for them. Really good conversation. They're very apologetic, the Wendy's Corporation is. And it was interesting because they apologized for the service as well as what's, what's come forward. You know, they've said that this issue is one of their top priorities, or actually is their top priority. And they want to, they have a desire to partner with us and see if there's ways that they can, they can demonstrate their support for the Wareham community. So, we'll be looking into some matters and reaching out to them, and I'm hoping something positive can develop out of this, because it's been one of, one of the things that I see is sometimes we in Wareham are most critical of ourselves, and I really, that's disappointing. So, I think it's a great opportunity to make, to show how we shine and make it work.
I hope it works out.
You know, I see...
You're going to pull that?
I've been to a, I'm sorry, I've been to a number of meetings where Richard has presented the Redevelopment Authority slideshow. And it's, it's, you know, highlighted every time that we have jobs, but a lot of them are low-paying. So, I don't know what they pay at Wendy's, McDonald's, Burger King. I mean, if you don't raise the base salary up a little bit, you know?
There was a couple of issues. There was...
I understand that.
And one of them was saying that, you know, one of the big ones that struck home that recovering addicts aren't worth hiring, and I thought that was...
I understand, but still, if they raise up their, the base salary a little bit, and if they're saying they can't get, then more people are going to come and apply. That's all I'm saying.
We've seen it on our end.
I'm not knocking anyone. I'm not, I'm not saying about addicts. I'm not, I'm not pointing the finger, just stating a fact.
Well, I want to say one thing about that. Recovering addicts, everybody should support them, in my opinion, including them. And they should give them a hand. They should give them help. And they, you know, recovering addict, you know, you know what it takes to be a recovering addict? Does anybody have any consequence, what, how, how difficult that is? And to just schluff them off is absurd. I mean, help them out. Give them a job.
Yep, and I think...
Help them through the, help them through it.
And they were definitely saying that was not representative of their corporate culture or hiring practices.
Good.
No, of course not.
That's the hottest job you'll ever have, being a recovering alcoholic or a recovering addict. That's probably the hottest job anybody ever had in their life. Okay, go ahead.
So, last weekend, we had the Cape Verdean Festival, and I want to thank Chief Walsec, Lieutenants Gerard, Korea, and Flannery, the sergeants, and the rank-and-file in the department, all the officers. It's, they do an amazing job. And then there's a lot of the partners, our EMS department, the director, David Evans, our paramedics. I don't know if anybody realized how many runs they do on a given day, but what they were going back and forth during that festival, because even though it wasn't as hot as we had experienced, you know, you still had a lot of people getting dehydrated and... They do an amazing job. Onset, onset fire, it was helpful. We had, we had help from up in Boston. We had some of the, they brought a truck down from one of the, one of, I believe, the fire academies that helped hydrate our folks. It's, it's an amazing thing. And part of this reaction is given in this day and age, where you can go back to people driving vehicles through festivals, to the shootings. This type of presence and their planning is what's needed to make it a safe event. You can never, you can never, you know, hit every point, but I got to tell you, what they did, how they put it together, the logistics. I am so proud of all these folks. They did an amazing job. And what we, what we saw, a nice, safe environment was, was very big. So, especially Wareham PD, EMS, fire, municipal maintenance, they all did an amazing job, and I'm very thankful.
Terrific. All right, anything else?
No, thank you.
All right, Liaison Reports. Alan?
Just one quick thing to piggyback on what Derek said. I was at the Cape Verdean Festival. I was at a birthday party earlier, and I had to get down there. The traffic was really well-managed. It was easy to get around. Too bad Tiny didn't stay for thanking him, because he and his organization did a fantastic job. The event was really well-done, and I could say that the paramedics were busy, because I was standing by the side of the stage, and someone sitting at a bench just passed out. Wasn't anything to do with alcohol or anything else. He just had a medical issue. They were, bang, they were right there and took care of him, no problem at all. And it was really well-run. I want to thank the businesses in the area who also closed certain stores and certain things to help out with the issues as well. Parking at both Heinz and Lopes Field were well-handled. Gator and the bus services, everything just worked beautifully. Normally, if you go back in history, as little as a couple of years ago, you'd have 20,000 people coming into Wareham, and basically, you could get anywhere near that area for hours, and there was no issue whatsoever. And it was one of the nicest events, and I wanted to thank them. They actually asked me to welcome everybody to Wareham when I got up on stage. And I wanted to thank them for the family atmosphere they bring. Thank you. Nothing else.
Jim?
Yeah, I'll piggyback on him. I walked the Heinz Field and looked at Lopes Field Monday morning. It was almost spotless. Couple of little things, but considering the number of people and cars, they did a great job cleaning up. Now, I went to a planning board meeting last night. All right, I sat back. Sorry, bud. I was getting comfortable. I was getting ready to roll here.
You'll get used to it after a while.
Get me one of those lapel microphones, will you? So, I went to the planning board meeting. I do the regular stuff, you know, site plan review and approval not required stuff and this and that. And then at the end, I got in a conversation, and basically, it came down to, they felt there's a disconnect between the committees and the groups. And, you know, they felt that it would be better if on a quarterly basis, maybe, just a suggestion, that the committees got together and had some discussion on what's going on. And so, not each group is isolated. I mean, none of the committees tend to talk to each other unless a crisis comes up. So, I just figured I'd, I'd bring that forward and, for food for thought. And maybe either they can move it forward, or we can do something to, to make this happen. They suggested maybe, you know, each committee once a month, instead of meeting, you know, the second time, every third month or whatever. Not once a month, every third, you know, just meet once, add a little more time to the business they had to do. And then on a day that most of us don't meet, we get together and have, you know, a board, a full, like workshop of the boards, which could be open to the public.
Well, it would have to be open to the public.
And Richard was there, and it was good. It was good discussion. And this isn't the first time I've heard it from that board. They feel there's a disconnect. And sometimes there is, I think.
Well, I think, you know, I think we've all felt this over the years, Jim, that there was problems where one board didn't know what the other one was doing and so on and so forth. And we even tried to have some, some get-togethers. The problem is, is that what you talk about at these get-togethers has to be so limited that some...
that sometimes it doesn't work out at all, because you can't talk about any issues that are pending, you can't, you know what I mean? There's just so many things you can't say and you can't talk about, right? Rich, we've had that problem in the past, and not, not that it's not a good idea, because I, I think it would be good. We used to have, we had a Saturday workshop, couple of years in a row, remember that we had that big workshop thing we set up? I'd be willing to set it up again if they wanted to have a workshop like that, but we'd have to have some kind of goals in mind when we did it. Of course, everybody'd have to post it, it'd have to be a public meeting, you know, all that kind of stuff. There's so many rules now that it makes it so much more difficult than it used to be.
I don't think they're insurmountable to, to post that we were gonna have a meeting of multiple boards, and generally as a workshop, and then, you know, pick a subject we want to talk about, you know, poll the groups and, and decide, maybe each group wants to bring something up on, on a quarter, maybe not every committee or board wants to be part of it, you know, and again, it's just a suggestion by them, I'm just bringing it forward, they didn't ask me to, but as a liaison, I, you know, I sit in the back and usually don't say a heck of a lot, but I thought it was worth bringing forward on that.
No, that's okay, go ahead.
This was discussed quite a bit over the last 10 years, back and forth. We have one basic impediment to all of this, is basically the planning board is part of the legislative branch of our government, and we as a board cannot tell them what to do, where to meet, et cetera, we don't have the authority, number one. They're separate from us, actually. They're the ones that bring forth articles, et cetera, where the other two boards can suggest to them articles that they bring forward. It, it's not a simple thing to do. What I used to do when I was on the planning board, I would basically go to the ZBA and monitor the meeting, and come back to the planning board and tell them what went on, the same thing with the Conservation Committee. There's ways of doing this to make it easy, I'm sure Rich can chime in as to what's legal and not legal, but I know there's some initial problems, because you're dealing with the executive branch versus the legislative branch of government.
You want to say something?
You?
You want to weigh in, no? It's okay, you don't have to. But, but... Do you, kid, if you want?
Well, we gave you a paycheck, it's safe.
Well, here's the thing, you've got all these different boards, and regardless of whether you think that they're executive branch or legislative branch, and I have my own view on that, that may differ somewhat from some of the opinions expressed, you can't make any of them go to anything, so I think that much we can all agree on. But if it's something that each board wants to do, as long as everybody posts their meeting, and as long as you have clear-cut agenda as to what's gonna be the subject of the meeting, you can do it. In some towns, they call this sort of meeting a super-board meeting, and, ah, that might just be jargon, but that's what some towns will call them, super-board meetings, where they'll get all the particular boards in a particular area of town government, then throw them all together in a room, give them some topics to work on, and see what they come out with. Now, obviously, as some of the speakers have said, you know, you want to be a little bit careful, you don't want them talking about matters, you know, like on the adjudicatory boards, you know, if people have applications in front of them, you don't want them talking about particular applications, because, you know, that'll get you in a lot of trouble, get you sued, just create a lot of headaches. But you can work around that. You know, obviously, you know, maybe there are particular issues that come up with respect to operating hearings at the planning board and at the Board of Appeals, and maybe one board has some good ideas that another board might benefit from. You can certainly have that kind of discussion without necessarily saying, you know, "Hey, Joe's applied for a variance," and, you know, you don't need to go get into that. Yeah. You don't need to get into the weeds, you know. So you can do it, there are ways to do it, of course, you have to be careful, the most important thing will be not so much the legality, but the desire to do it. So certainly this board could give a friendly suggestion to all those boards, you maybe think of the different boards you wanted grouped together, you know, maybe you want to have the planning board, the Board of Appeals, and the Redevelopment Authority sit down together, because those are, in one fashion or another, land use boards. I know Redevelopment Authority's not a, like a zoning and variance board, but, you know, it is a form of planning board, you're planning to redevelop things, so, you know, that might be a grouping, maybe, if you're daring, you want to invite Mrs. Slaven and her friends to come in to talk about conservation stuff, you know, however you want to do it. So can you do it? Yes.
All right. Okay, so...
This, you know, again, it's a suggestion and food for thought and...
We could, we could send out some inquiries to the boards and see if they have any inkling to do it, and see what they say.
If you suggest there'll be food, more people will attend.
Yeah. Food is included, right?
I just want to say there's a Regional Refuge District meeting next Wednesday, the 21st, at 5:00, over in room 27, the multi-serve, no, oh, no, Town Hall, this is multi-serve, Town Hall, 27, room 27.
Okay.
5:00 PM. Thank you.
All right, all right.
I like that they rotate through the towns. Mary, you have anything?
No, sorry.
No, and I don't, because it's quiet right now, although I just did want to say Guy Campina's mother passed away, and so I want him to understand that we, we've, we sympathize with him, and that we, we send our support to him and his family during this tough time. Next is consent agenda.
Where do the bills, the minutes, we're...
July 30th, you got minutes from July there?
Can we, um...
Is there a problem with them?
Yes, so can we put that on the next agenda to do those after we get them fixed?
Yeah, we can move aside, no problem. All right, then that's it.
Motion to adjourn.
We, we don't meet again until the 27th, just so everybody knows, we'll be, we don't meet for a full-fledged board meeting, although next week, on the 20th, we will be having a special meeting. It is with the O'Connell Group, and it will be discussing a possible development, that's all I can say at this point. They'll be giving us a presentation, of course, everybody is welcome to come, it's a public meeting like anything else, and that's what we'll be doing. We'll be here at 7:00 next week, just for that.